Good afternoon and welcome to Seattle City Club's District Four City Council Debate. I'm your moderator, Mark Baumgartner, with KCTS9 and Crosscut. With me are Sidney Brownstone of the Seattle Times and Chris Daniels of King Five. Seattle City Club would like to acknowledge their presenting sponsor, Amazon, supporting sponsor, AARP, and host sponsor, University Lutheran, which is this place that we're all in right now, for making this debate possible. And now, please welcome our Seattle City Council District Four candidates, Alex Peterson and Sean Scott. Thank you both for being here this afternoon. So, here is how this is going to go. So, we'll begin the debate with a question and answer round where candidates will have 60 seconds to respond. If time permits, we'll follow that with a waffle round where candidates will respond by holding up yes, no, and waffle signs. Finally, we'll finish the debate with 90-second closing statements by each candidate. The journalists here also reserve the right to ask follow-ups. When we ask a follow-up, the candidates will each be given 30 seconds to respond. Also, we have a bunch of audience questions from you guys, so thank you very much for these. We're going to be inserting some of these throughout the debate. Candidates, your responses will be timed, and we will cut you off if you go over your time. All right? Audience, please hold all applause until the end of the debate. Candidates are allowed an equal speaking time, and any audience applause or other disruption will be counted against the candidate's total speaking time. All right? So, that's it. Let's have our first question. Sidney?
Sure, so this question is for both candidates, but Alex Peterson will start with you. One of you is a younger black renter and a democratic socialist. The other is an older white homeowner and not a socialist. What do you think are the most important differences between you and your opponent?
Sure, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for being here today and for our hosts and sponsors and for the faith community that let us in here today to use their space. In terms of the differences between me and my opponent, the key difference is experience, professional experience. I used to work at the Department of Housing and Urban Development during the Clinton administration. I've got a master's degree in government administration. I served in the private sector for 15 years managing financial analysts to preserve affordable housing. When I was at HUD, I worked on homelessness and worked for two different city councils as well, Oakland, California, which has very tough issues, and also in Seattle for Tim Burgess when he chaired the Budget Committee and was president of the City Council. That experience is needed to get things done, to get the progressive results that we want. Thank you.
I would say, and thank you again for everybody for joining us, all of our D4 constituents and supporters, journalists who are hosting this debate, and the faith community. Thank you to Amazon, our presenting sponsor, as well as the old saying in Seattle politics goes, "Keep your friends close, but make sure to check in with Jeff Bezos at least once in the election cycle." I think that experience is indeed a key difference in this race, but I also think another key difference is the fact that we have tried to put forward pretty much the most robust climate justice strategy and platform that you can really attain at the city level. We have talked about a Seattle Green New Deal. We have been endorsed by every environmental organization that has endorsed in this race, including the 43rd LD Environmental Caucus, and it is a great badge of pride for our campaign that as we see youth climate strikers across the country, as we see climate activists really putting their lives on the line to stick up for this question, we are trying to carry on that tradition with what that looks like at the local level and a very robust platform for climate justice here in the city of Seattle.
Time's up. Thank you. We're going to move on to some questions about homelessness, which I know everyone in this room cares deeply about. So, this question is for both candidates. Sean will start with you this time. Both of you have said that you would support a legal right to shelter here in Washington State. How would you implement that?
Well, I think a legal right to shelter is something that most District Four voters would agree on. Our strategy for implementing it, I think, is a real sharp point of contention in this race. We have been very, very transparent about the fact that we need more progressive revenue to meet our revenue commitment for organizations like DESC and others that are doing great work on the ground to house homeless folks. They need money to actually get that done. We have to put a material commitment behind that sentiment towards a right for shelter. What we want to see in the city is we want to see more community service officers to get people connected to services that might be needed. We want to see more city-run and administered shelters, similar to the kind that is actually opening up pretty close to where we're standing here at an old synagogue on 45th and 20th. And more than anything, we want to hear from the frontline communities that have already been doing great work around housing the homeless, and we have to make sure that they have the money that they actually need to get the work done, that they want to get done.
Thank you.
Sure, so we need to do a better job with homelessness in Seattle. We've seen homelessness increase even while the spending is increasing. My experience at HUD and in the private sector on affordable housing, I want the City Council to adhere to the best practices proven to reduce homelessness. We've seen homelessness go down throughout the country. The right to shelter is something we should support statewide. Statewide, we also need those progressive tax revenues. We have the most regressive tax system in the state of Washington. We need our state legislature to get this done next session so that we can get those revenues that we need. In the meantime, City Council needs to get its fiscal house in order so that we can fund the best strategies, the most compassionate, effective strategies to get people into shelter.
Thank you. Alex, a report on King County's homelessness response from consulting company McKinsey &amp; Company found that the county needs to be spending upwards of $400 million on homelessness response. Mayor Durkin's 2020 budget would spend a little more than $100 million on homelessness response. Do you agree with the McKinsey Report's assessment? And if not, where specifically in the budget would you find savings?
So, again, we need to adhere to the best practices proven to reduce homelessness. The City Council has failed to do this, and we need experience to get that done. The McKinsey Report is very light on data, and it's likely we do need more resources, especially to increase permanent supportive housing, which is one of the best practices that we need to implement. But we also need to get our fiscal house in order first at the city government. We have a $6.5 billion city budget. When Mayor Durkin proposed it, she increased it from last year, and I think that trying to go straight to the McKinsey Report is not practical because, again, where does the source of funding come from? And I think that's why we, again, need this statewide progressive tax reform.
And just as a follow-up, where specifically in the budget would you find savings?
It's throughout the budget. So, one of the examples is the city has a city auditor that reports to the City Council who's used very infrequently. One of the times he was used, he found millions of dollars of uncollected money from real estate developers. So, we need to be auditing every department in the city. Seattle City Light is a $1 billion enterprise. Seattle Public Utilities is a $1 billion enterprise. We're seeing the spending go up, but we're not seeing the results we should. So, audits should just be part of the fiscal responsibility.
That's time. Thank you. Sean, you've said that you would support bringing back the head tax to pay for homelessness services, though polling funded by head tax supporters found that more than half of those surveyed wanted to repeal it. Outside of the head tax, how would you increase funding for homelessness services?
Well, I think it's definitely the case that when candidates for City Council talk about the need for statewide revenue solutions, in essence, what is really being said there is that we're planning on passing the buck. To me, that is an unacceptable solution. The fact that the City Council in the run-up to the passage of the employee head tax indicated no less than six progressive taxes that we have the latitude to enact at the city level, that's a mansion sales tax, that's a real estate speculation tax, that's a tax on excess compensation, all of those within the legal framework of the city, perfectly executable by and large. I look at the recommendations that the City Council has already made with respect to progressive revenue, and I think that we actually have the power to enact those taxes were we to have the political will on the City Council to pursue them.
Thank you. This question is for both candidates, and Sean will start with you. The city has dramatically increased removals of tent encampments that are considered hazards or obstructions which don't require giving 72-hour notice or available shelter space. The city is also cracking down on dilapidated RVs and so-called car ranchers. What do you think of Mayor Durkin's current approach?
So, some people refer to the process that you're describing as homeless sweeps. Others prefer the euphemism of engagement. I think either way, the data is pretty clear that it's a failed policy, and we know this because members of the navigation team that have been responsible for executing these sweeps of homeless encampments have protested the lack of efficacy of these sweeps and also the lack of empathy as a means towards getting people actually housed. I do not support the sweeps. I do not support Mayor Durkin's apology for what was called broken windows policing when she announced the ramp up of the intensity and frequency of these sweeps some months ago. I think that we have to have a housing-first approach, and we have to go in the direction of approach that does not waste $10 million a year to the tune of $60 million over six years. Looking back, you would have to think that we would rather have that money spent on something like supportive housing, have that money spent on expanding our community service officer program, have that money spent on a data-driven and data-proven solution like safe injection sites. So, no, I do not support the sweeps or...
That's time. Thank you. Alex, same question.
So, the homeless encampments we see throughout our city, it's not helping anybody to let people live like that outside. The navigation teams are very important to connect those people who are suffering to shelter that they need and the services they need. A lot of them need help, and the only way to do that is to outreach to them and connect with them. And so, I do support Mayor Durkin's policy. I think it's balanced. She's been incrementally increasing the response so that we can help more people. They do need to get into shelter. I do agree with the housing-first policy. People do need a permanent sense of housing so that they can deal with the challenges they're facing. I do not support safe consumption sites. I don't know where in District Four that's being proposed.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to feed off that answer that you just had, Alex. We'll start with you. These are questions that came directly from the audience. Do you support city-sanctioned encampments that allow drug use, and how do you think it is beneficial for individuals to live in an encampment like that?
So, again, we need to help people. Compassion requires that we get positive results, and the evidence-based strategies used around the country do not allow this outside in an encampment. There are, however, evidence-based strategies for enhanced shelter, which are low-barrier shelters where their case management paired up with the people there. So, if they are still using, they're getting the behavioral health treatment that they need. This is why I support working with Mayor Durkin and King County to deal with this regional crisis, to create this regional authority that because the behavioral health dollars flow through King County, we need to link people up. But that's in enhanced shelters. That's not out in encampments.
Sean?
If you could repeat the question, just want to make sure I heard it correctly.
Yes. The question from the audience was, "Do you support city-sanctioned encampments that allow drug use? How do you think it is beneficial for individuals to live in an encampment like this?"
I would have to say that I would support any measure, and this includes this measure, that actually gets people in a situation where they're able to get treatment without being criminalized. And if that means that we have to have encampments that are city-managed, city-acknowledged, and as a result of being city-acknowledged, we actually have some sort of control over sort of what happens there, where those encampments might spring up, I would have to say I would be in favor of that measure. I would also say that while we're talking about evidence-based strategies that, you know, exist across the country, the city of Philadelphia has recently, their safe consumption site has withstood a legal federal challenge, and this has been a measure that everybody who has studied the science behind addiction and how it works has admitted it would be a positive measure. So, I would have to support safe consumption sites, and I would say that I would support city-managed and city-facilitated encampments of the sort that you mentioned.
Thank you.
This question is for both candidates. Sean, we'll start with you. What role should law enforcement play in the city of Seattle's homelessness response?
Well, I think that the role that the Seattle Police Department should play is getting out from under the federal consent decree. If you have a police department that is, in essence, under federal investigation as a result of repeated practices of racist policing, you have to have doubts about their efficacy with dealing with and handling our most vulnerable population, many of whom are actually people of color, members of the LGBTQIA+ community, and also overrepresented by the indigenous community. So, I would have to say that the role that the police department should have to play is, as my opponent likes to say, to get its house in order before it serves as a legal ambassador for some of the communities that need help the most.
Thank you. Alex?
Sure. In general, this is a key difference. I believe that we need to support the good work of our first responders, that we can have both constitutional policing and safe neighborhoods. When it comes to homelessness and the navigation teams often include a police officer, you know, I think it's important to de-emphasize the police officer's role in that and really to increase the importance of the social service connections and the shelter connections that are being made.
Thank you.
One final question in this category, and it's a question that is a little bit more maybe philosophical. It's, "What do you understand about homelessness now that you didn't understand five years ago?" Alex, we'll start with you.
That I didn't understand five years ago? So, there is much more data now, thanks to the Obama administration, on what's proven to work. One of the best programs for homelessness is called diversion. Diversion, as some of you may know, is when somebody shows up newly homeless at a shelter. Currently, they're put into the shelter or sent back out onto the street. Diversion tries to solve the problem that moment with the smallest amount of resources needed. It could be that somebody was evicted because they lost their job, but it turns out they lost their job because their car broke down. If we fix that problem and negotiate with their landlord to negotiate first last month's rent, get them back into their unit, divert them from homelessness, that also frees up the shelter bed that we can use for people sleeping near I-5.
Sean?
I would have to say that what I understand about homelessness now that I did not understand five years ago, in the age of Trump and in a post-2016 reality, is the extent to which, just as we see immigrant populations demonized and stigmatized nationally as a means towards deflating a general progressive agenda that emerged in the aftermath of the Obama years and as a result of the Obama years, locally, we also see area conservatives, I think, really leaning on the issue of homelessness as a way of deflating progressive gains for secure scheduling, for $15 an hour minimum wage for a domestic workers' bill of rights, in a sense that many of Seattle's biggest corporations and really the capitalists to lead in the city are at a situation where they're feeling very defensive. And one of the ways that they have sort of identified a way to sort of reverse that momentum that progressive communities have won over the last few years is to harp on the issue of homelessness by demonizing them, criminalizing them, and looking at them as other in much the same way that I think conservatives writ large nationally look at our immigrant population.
Thank you, Sean. Now, we're going to move on to law enforcement, and of course, there's a little overlap with homelessness here, which comes into play in this first question, which is, and this is a question for both candidates. Should the law enforcement-assisted diversion program, or LEED, be expanded in order to address the issue of prolific offenders? If not, what other proposals could be used? Sean, let's start with you.
Well, I used to serve as the campaign manager for the late Darren Morris, a candidate for King County Prosecutor, who was a champion of law enforcement-assisted diversion programs, and so I would support that measure wholeheartedly. I would also support making sure that it has the money that it needs to do, that it would, I would also support it having the money so that it would have, you know, resources to actually do what it does as a resource. I think it's also the case that, look, it's very, very obvious that we have a police force right now that, as a result of a repeated pattern of racist policing, is not necessarily in the position to be administering help to many. There are many communities, even within District Four, where Tralina Lyles was blown away by the Seattle Police Department who feel defensive as a result of racist policing practices. So, anything that we can do to move in the direction of anti-carceral solutions, and that includes expanding our city's community service officer program, is a measure that I would support, and that includes LEED.
Thank you. Alex?
Sure, so the law enforcement-assisted diversion program has been studied and proven to be successful for low-level crimes. It's great that they did an evaluation with the University of Washington, and because of that, I feel confident expanding the funding for LEED, and they're also doing it geographically they're expanding. So, I met again with the staff there recently, and we talked about expanding it in the North Precinct more. It's in a couple of pockets here, the U District Ballard. But in terms of expanding that to violent offenders, we need to make sure that, again, that's based in evidence to work. It does work for lower-level crimes, to divert people away from the criminal justice system. But with violent offenders, I think we need to be very careful that, you know, we're keeping everybody safe and make sure that diversion would be working in those cases first.
All right. Thank you, Alex. Now, we're going to talk about a recent report that came out that police have increased street-level arrests of sex workers along Aurora Avenue. How do you feel about this? Alex?
Sure, so, you know, we talked about in the debate that Sidney was at earlier and the different commissions about, I believe we talked about sex workers, and so, you know, again, this is where, that's something that should be decriminalized, that people who are in that line of work are victims, and they should not be, they should not be going to jail.
Sean?
So, very early in my campaign for City Council, we met with the Seattle Chapter of the Sex Workers Outreach Project. I was happy to read in a report generated, in part because of the efforts of Council Member Lisa Herbold, an Office of Civil Rights report, that one of the main recommendations that the Office of Civil Rights recommended on this score has been repealing the city's prostitution loitering ordinance, which is oftentimes used as a pretext to surveil and harass and badger people of color, young people in particular. So, decriminalizing sex work is an issue that we have led on in this campaign since at least February. I'm glad to hear that it's something that my opponent may or may not be coming around on, but it's something that we have been consistent on from beginning to end, and that's what I feel about it. Thank you.
As a follow-up to Mark's question, the city has, for the last several years, relied on what's called the Nordic model for policing sex work. Do you agree with this model? Why or why not? Let's start with you, Sean.
I would have to say that our model for addressing sex work in American major cities has been too wrapped up in an idea, number one, that necessarily every single person who participates in the sex trade is a victim, period. But I also think there has been too much of a focus on criminalizing folks. So, I do not support the way that we have gone about policing sex work, in part because I think our prison population is the largest prison population in the world. We have cast, in the immortal words of Bill Clinton, "Too wide a net" with respect to our prison population, and so we have to get to a point where we're de-emphasizing criminalization in all of its forms. And so, I think that American policy, especially in our cities, with respect to sex work has been flawed and failed.
Thank you. Alex?
Yes, and again, I agree that we need to decriminalize that kind of work, and we need to go, we need to go beyond that. We need to go further upstream to actually solve the root causes. Why are people getting into this line of work? What's going on with their economic situation, with their upbringing? And I've worked on several evidence-based solutions, early childhood programs that will, there are longitudinal studies that show when we do nurse-family partnership for low-income moms and their babies, when we do high-quality preschool for three- and four-year-olds, that people grow up and stay out of the juvenile justice system, stay out of the criminal justice system, graduate from high school, go on to great life outcomes when we have these early interventions. We need to increase our intervention early in a person's life, and Seattle's been a leader on that, thanks to some of the work that I've done.
Thank you. I didn't hear a very clear answer from either candidate about whether you supported specifically the Nordic model, so just as a quick follow-up for both candidates, could you define what the Nordic model is? We'll start with you, Sean.
So, my understanding of the Nordic model, as it pertains to sex work, has to do with, as opposed to sort of a practice that we see in Amsterdam where it's like there's universal just acknowledgement that sex work is a trade, and it is by and large decriminalized, there are sort of more patchwork solutions that don't necessarily get us to a place where we're de-emphasizing the criminalization of sex work. So, that's why I answered not in the affirmative in saying that I do not support what I understand of the Nordic model.
That's time. Thank you. Alex?
That's my understanding of the Nordic model, too. I'm not an expert on it.
Okay. Follow-up question from the audience, actually, and we'll start with you, Alex, but this is for both candidates. Would you have supported the SPOG contract? SPOG is the Seattle Police Officers Guild, the union that represents police officers. How would you hold SPD accountable and in federal compliance?
Sure, so, like I said earlier, I strongly believe that we can support the good work of our first responders, police officers and firefighters. I'm endorsed by the Firefighters Union, and we can do that by increasing their morale, making sure, one of the things about that was they were, they didn't have a contract for several years. And so, one of the reasons Mayor Durkin, who has a lot of credibility on this issue because she started the consent decree as a U.S. attorney, we need to pay them well to retain them. We are losing officers in this city. It is becoming a crisis, and so I would have supported that contract. However, we must immediately negotiate the new contract because since then, the judge has found they're out of compliance with their disciplinary system. So, that's got to be fixed, so we can do both things at the same time.
Thank you. Sean?
I would not have supported the SPOG contract, and I was for many months in a very contested primary with many progressive candidates, the only candidate to say so. We're proud to be endorsed in this race by the 43rd LD Democrats, which, in its bylaws, has called for civilian oversight of the police. We stand with over two dozen community groups, including the ACLU and One America, in saying that the current SPOG contract was a disaster for police accountability. We are in a situation where city council members are now attempting to relitigate a contract that I think was mistakenly signed, and community groups were calling it out as mistakenly signed in the moment, so mistakenly signed in the moment. So, while we're talking about listening to communities of color, while we're talking about making sure that we're actually living up to our progressive values, I think the question of unconstitutional policing is certainly one of the most obvious questions that we need to address in the city. So, I'm proud to say that I would not have supported the SPOG contract.
Thank you.
Let's turn to transportation. 35th Avenue Northeast, as you know, has become a flashpoint in this district. We're going to start with you, Alex, on this question. What did the city do wrong in their planned safety improvements in that intersection?
Sure, so 35th Avenue Northeast in the Bryant-Wedgewood neighborhoods, city government did a lot of things wrong with that. One of the things was a lack of transparency. They didn't, it was originally built as a road repaving project, and so most residents didn't know what was going to be planned in terms of removing parking, adding bike lanes on the arterial there, removing bus stops. There are several, there's a library, faith communities, businesses there on 35th. And so, also, the previous council member, there was a public disclosure request showing where he basically directed the Seattle Department's Transportation to proceed, even though SDOT was finding that there are lots of people opposed to it. So, I think we need to reengage with communities, our constituents, early, be very open about what's being planned with those tax dollars and get input, make modifications if needed. I support an interconnected bike network, but I think sometimes greenways on side streets are better.
That's time. Sean?
So, we have really, in a lot of ways, a crisis around pedestrian safety in the city. A lot of that has to do with the fact that there are neighborhoods, particularly in the South End, that don't have adequate sidewalks, oftentimes do not have adequate signage to protect pedestrians. But it also has to do with the fact that neighborhoods in the North End do not have the biking infrastructure that we need. One of the auxiliary benefits of having bike lanes, we know for sure, is that they have, they provide a dampening effect on high speeds on roads like 35th, which has been dubbed the Durkin Speedway by some urbanists in the city of Seattle. And so, I think one of the things that the city got wrong with respect to the road safety improvements was not following through on them. I think that if we are serious about pedestrian safety, if we're serious about creating a city where people feel safe to explore the city outside of cars and on foot via bike, using what's known as multimodal transportation, then we have to get real about putting bike lanes on major arterial roads because lives are really at stake as a result of this issue.
Thank you, Sean. Another question regarding transportation. There's been some momentum in this city for e-scooters. Looks like legislation could be coming before the council, but there are some cautionary tales around the country concerning safety of e-scooters. What should e-scooter legislation look like in this city, Sean?
I think e-scooter legislation in and of itself is one question, and I would think that having, one of the things that would really, really support the scooter community, if that's what they're called, is actually having a connected bike network because you can use those for double purposes, I think. But it's also the case that when you have, when you don't have that interconnected bike network, when you don't have a mayoral administration or council members that are paying attention to pedestrian safety and folks who are... to pedestrian safety and folks who are on, and the safety of people who are on foot, there's generally going to be a climate of unsafeness. So, again, I emphasize that we have to move in the direction of policies that get us more transit, that encourage people to explore the city on foot and outside of cars. It's part of the reason why we're proud to earn the endorsement in this race of the Transit Writers Union, which has called for Orca for All in the city of Seattle. So, I think that it's less about focusing on the scooter legislation in and of itself, and I think generally creating more of a climate where we're addressing climate change by having people outside of their cars.
Alex?
Yeah, I think we need to look at the transportation system as an ecosystem, and what we're trying to do is actually get more people, we're trying to move as many people as possible in the greenest possible way, and that's often going to be buses. It's often going to be getting people to light rail. We're blessed with three light rail stations in District Four. When I door-bellied everybody, or every block in District Four, people said, "I want to get to the light rail. I want to get out of my car." How do I get there? What's the best way to get there? So, I think we need to create those ways for people to get there, to solve that last mile to light rail. E-scooters may be one of those ways. I think we need to test it. I like the cautious approach that was taken by our mayor, because there are safety issues, you know, head injury issues, and so, we just need to be careful. It also doesn't serve everybody like a bus does. So, you have people, you know, parents or families, or kids, and older folks who may not be able to use that system.
That's time. All right. Thank you. We're going to move on to another transportation question, because we are here in the U District. And I don't know if you know this, but the Montlake Bridge is just to the south side of this district, and there's going to be some issues coming up over the next few months with construction in that area. So, if elected, what will you do to ease the pain for people in this district over the coming months? Alex, we'll start with you.
Sure. I think the key is to listen to the community. There are neighbors from Lowerhurst, Montlake, the U District, who are all really engaged in the 520 construction and negatively impacted with the market that's threatened to close, for example. There's also lots of opportunity there. There's talk about putting a second bridge for transit across the cut. So, I think that it's really listening to the communities and mitigating those impacts. There's so many good things that our local and state government can do, but we have to be sure that we're harmonizing it with people who already live there in the neighborhoods and making sure we're not negatively impacting them with increased traffic into their side streets where their kids play. I think it's really important, you know, people know their neighborhoods better than the planners do. So, the planners and the public officials need to listen to people on the ground.
Sean?
Well, I think many of the planners who have studied the issue of transportation infrastructure in this race have heard the case that both of us have to make about where we're going to go in the direction of making sure that transit infrastructure projects don't inconvenience residents, what we're going to do to make sure that we're bolstering light rail, what we're going to do to make sure that we're bolstering multimodal transportation solutions. All of those environmental organizations have endorsed me in this race, and part of it is because I think some of the planners that my opponent had mentioned recognize that we're the campaign that supported Sound Transit 3. We supported the Move Seattle levy, which is going to really play a core role in administering some of the relief for a lot of this traffic that we might see in coming months as a result of what's going on on 520 and others. So, I think, I do agree that it has to do with listening to the neighborhoods that have concerns over these issues, but I think that also a lot of headway has already been done over, by environmentalists who have really studied these issues, and we're happy to earn their support in this race.
Thank you. So, we're going to stay on campus for this next question. So, the University of Washington's master plan, which was approved last December by the city council, calls for 6 million square feet of new construction that will accommodate more than 7,000 additional students and employees. What should the city be doing to prepare for this dramatic change? Sean, let's start with you.
Well, we did give away so much space, I think, in the implementation of that UW master plan. I know that there are 400, only 400 affordable units that were demanded of the campus, and even those were treated as voluntary. One of the things that I think we also have to be preparing for is a, not only a looming childcare crisis, but I think an actual childcare crisis, where many citizens of Seattle are paying as much for rent as they are paying for childcare. It's one of the reasons why we have pushed for comprehensive zoning reform in this race. Currently, we have a situation where it is illegal to build childcare facilities in much of the city of Seattle. That would come as a surprise to many, I think. And a lot of that has to do with a very restrictive zoning code, where single-family zoning has, I think, too much of a sway over how our neighborhoods are constructed. So, for working families in neighborhoods like Bryant and Wallingford, working families that are going to be attracted to the university district in time, we want to make sure that we're loosening our zoning codes so that we can actually have the childcare facilities that working families need.
Alex?
Sure. So, the University of Washington is a major asset to the district, to the whole state, to the region, and so, they have a lot of influence. And I think that the neighborhoods had a lot of good input on the master plan. I don't think enough of it was incorporated. I think that when we have big institutions like the University of Washington, like the city of Seattle, that they need to listen better to the communities. The transportation impacts are huge. It's very hard to get to Husky Stadium light rail. I think the University of Washington could have made many more accommodations on that. I agree that in terms of public benefit that was extracted, there wasn't enough affordable housing that was produced. One of our earlier opponents should be commended for her work on that, Emily Myers. But they do need to provide more affordable housing for people so that there's less commuting congestion.
That's time. Thank you. So, a fun one that's not really transportation, but because we are here near the University of Washington, and there are a lot of students and faculty probably in this room who will be sitting in front of a television tonight to watch a Husky football game, I want to know your favorite Husky sports moment. Alex, we'll start with you.
Favorite Husky sports moment?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the women's basketball team is fantastic, and I took my daughter there a couple of years ago, and they won, and my daughter was really energized by it, and she has not joined the basketball team since. But I think really, it's, you know, it's that community feeling of, you know, being able to go to the local sports there, and so, the women's basketball team was a huge inspiration for my family.
Sean?
So, I would have to say, as a 27-year resident of Seattle, I have really fond memories of the Seahawks actually having to play a handful of home games at Husky Stadium, and I think the fall of 1994, because the roof was caving in at the King Dome. And so, watching the Seahawks lose at Husky Stadium is really one of the enduring memories of my childhood.
So, no specific Husky memory?
I think Isaiah Thomas stands out to me. He stands out to me. He was at school at the university a few years after I was, and hit a number of, you know, really, really big shots that I'm sort of blanking on. I did not think that this was going to come up at this debate. See, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit rusty on my basketball knowledge right now, but, you know, it's between IT and the Hawks getting waxed.
All right. Thank you. All right. We're going to zoom out a little bit and get serious again. This is, we've gotten a few questions about the Green New Deal. And so, this particular question from the audience is about the Seattle Climate Action Plan for reducing the city's 6 million tons of CO2 emissions is falling short on its path to zero. When you take into account the 2030 deadline put forth by the Green New Deal, it is falling far short. So, it's been pointed out that now may not be the time for panic, but action is required as if our house is on fire, because it is. What is your plan for making real action, your plan for meeting and exceeding the Seattle Climate Action Plan? And this question goes to Sean.
I do actually think it's the time for a panic. I think that cities have a role in combating climate change. I think that part of the reason why every environmental organization that's endorsed in this race has gone our way is because we recognize the urgency around this question. I think that, you know, we look at, we're in a city where 66% of our carbon emissions come from transportation. Most of those are from people sort of on their workaday commutes, driving really long distances, because they could not find housing close to the city core. And so, you have to think that the fact that multifamily housing, duplexes, triplexes, the kind of housing that you see when you come to Eastlake in District Four, is illegal, and upwards of 80% of the city has something to do with that fact. So, we have to be very, very clear-eyed about the root causes for the climate crisis and what cities like Seattle are doing to contribute to it. And a lot of that has to do with making sure that we have an approach that makes affordable, and not just affordable, but social and public housing as accessible to people who need it as possible.
Thank you. Alex?
Yes, we need to go beyond the Climate Action Plan the city has. We also need to go beyond the New Green Deal resolution that the city council just passed, because they left out a couple of key things, such as getting our city's fleet of vehicles to get to zero emissions faster. They also left out the fact that we need to defeat Tim Imman's Initiative 976, which is on the ballot in November. You've got to defeat I-976. For some reason, they left that out. I've got an 18-point plan. Please go to my website and check it out on Climate Action. I'll read them quickly while my time's here. We need to lead the world in leveraging our data and technology for best practices, encourage more use of solar, protect and expand our tree canopy, convert our city fleet faster, get more people to ride sound transit, renew the supplemental bus tax levy, require large institutions to do more for their employers commuting, phase out gas-powered two-stroke leaf blowers, something I've talked about for months. I'm glad to see my opponent has signed on.
And that's time. Thank you. We're going to move on to some questions about the business community here. So, earlier in this general election season, you both co-signed a letter calling on the current city council to suspend its planned upzone for the Ave. Can you describe the reasons you believe the upzone should be suspended, and how this position aligns with your larger political philosophy? We're going to start with Alex here.
Sure. So, I mean, after this debate, I encourage you to walk down the Ave. It's a special historical business district, many of you know, and I think that's why it should be preserved. Also, we've seen a lot of displacement occurring with the upzone, so we need to be very careful. We do want to upzone near transit, so an upzone in the U District makes absolute sense. It's just that the details matter. So, you've got businesses, 65% of those businesses are owned by women and people of color. We need to preserve those. I was there yesterday at the Gargoyles Statuary Store. I mean, the food options there are incredible, and we don't want to disrupt it with an upzone. And that's part of the listening. You've got to listen on the ground, listen to the community, and the business owners there, you know, were fearful about being displaced, and I think city government needs to be receptive to that and make tweaks to the policies.
Thank you. Sean?
Well, I think with respect to protecting immigrant and POC-owned businesses on the Ave, it's not enough to only play defense in saying that we're going to resist an upzone. We're the only campaign in this race that has actually called for commercial rent control, which is a proactive step to make sure that that displacement does not happen. It is a measure that has in the past been resisted by a lot of vectors of big business and, you know, large financial institutions that are not endorsing me in this race. They have gone the way of my opponent. So, talking about commercial rent control is an actual stopgap and an actual measure we can put in place to proactively address the question of how it is that we're going to keep small businesses from being displaced. With respect to where the upzones fit into my general political philosophy, I think it's the case that if we had had more of the transit-oriented development, and frankly, more of the affordable and social housing development that we have led on in this campaign and tried to talk a lot about with the endorsement that we have from the Washington Low-Income Housing Institute, we wouldn't necessarily need to place all of our bets on the Ave as the one strip that's going to get us all the affordable housing that we'd need. So, it has to do with the fact that we need to balance out our priorities around where we're going to put density generally.
That's time. Thank you, Sean. But continuing the conversation about the Ave, the question is simple. What's your vision for the Ave 20 years from now?
Right. Well, I follow the recommendations of the U District Mobility Group, which have called for a pedestrianized Ave. We look at streets like Occidental Ave and Pioneer Square, and, you know, we were bringing up our favorite Husky moments and Game Day and things of that nature. When you go down to go see a Seahawks game or a Mariners game, if that's your thing, you see a lot of people exploring the city on foot. We can have something like that for Husky Saturdays by pedestrianizing the Ave, making sure that still some of the small businesses there are able to have access to freight and materials getting dropped off and things of that sort. But in general, we want to get to a point where I think the Ave and other streets and major corridors throughout the city are, you know, only to be explored outside of cars.
Alex?
So, my vision for the Ave is a vision that's shared with the local businesses that occupy the Ave. And also, there's a lot of low-income housing currently on the Ave. And the vision is that the Ave is safe, it's affordable, it's vibrant, and we need to do that by not disrupting the system there and having real estate speculation. So, I look forward to working, again, with the police department and the University of Washington on safety issues. I know there's a big concern among a lot of students and parents of their students here with safety, so we need to encourage a vibrant Ave so that people want to go to the Ave. It's a destination, and it should be when light rail opens up on Brooklyn Ave.
Thank you.
We're going to move two blocks east of the Ave for this question, and it's one that I asked you at a previous forum. I'm going to ask it again. Several human service providers in the U District are being displaced from University Temple due to redevelopment. How would you keep human service agencies in the U District when the forces of gentrification are pushing them out? Alex, we'll start with you.
How would you support them?
How would you keep them in the U District?
Keep them in the U District? Sure. So, again, with the real estate speculation that's going on with the upzone, one of the challenges is the upzone made sense in the U District, but the city council didn't put any mitigants in place to deal with the negative side effects of that. So, rents increasing, for example, on certain blocks that were upzoned versus blocks that were not upzoned. And so, I think, you know, it's a cautionary tale for policymakers. Before you tinker with the economy like that, make sure that you're protecting those vulnerable nonprofits that will be subject to rent increases. And then, I've got a background in real estate finance, my public sector experience as well. So, I would be able to work with, like, State Rep Frank Chop, who endorsed me, who is, for example, relocating one of those nonprofits right now. I'd want to work with the state legislators to get that done.
Thank you. Sean?
Well, we actually had a candidate forum where many of our health and human services providers were actually putting forward some of the ideas that we're going to be able to hopefully implement in the coming years in the city of Seattle. I was happy to attend that forum. I think that when we see a shelter opening up and a former synagogue, it lets us know that obviously the faith community has a place in addressing some of these concerns. But maybe if the city was actually playing a little bit more of an active role in securing some of those spaces, it wouldn't have to fall to not-for-profits in the faith community. So, it's part of the reason why we've talked about in this race having the city establish a land bank, so it's actually able to purchase land as it comes available on the private market and either distribute that land to not-for-profit housing providers, or perhaps to health and human services providers in District Four that are doing really important work. So, I think it has to do with the city really, really stepping in and providing, and being more of a land broker and taking care of some of the overheads so that some of the on-the-ground frontline organizations can do the work that they do.
Thank you.
Well, it is not often that we get to break news during a debate, but we have some news from the Ethics and Elections Commission. It appears that, Alex, do you have filed a formal complaint against Mr. Scott with the Ethics and Elections Commission as of yesterday, with a hearing scheduled for Tuesday? I see an email from you right here to Wayne Barnett.
No, that is to be lifted from the cap, the spending cap.
Yeah, so, that's the question. I just want to read one of the sentences, and then have you have a chance to respond.
Great, yes.
Your email here says, "I hereby request that my campaign elect Alex Peterson be freed from the maximum campaign valuation limit and individual contribution limits because my opponent has exceeded his cap." So, please, explain what this complaint filed with Ethics and Elections is all about.
Sure. It's definitely not a complaint. This has happened multiple times during the primary. Different campaigns exceed the cap, and then their opponents get to be released from the cap. So, it's actually a pretty standard process that's occurred multiple times.
But your email goes on to say that Mr. Scott was fundraising after the primary period, therefore you believe that this is about the Democracy Voucher program.
Yeah, the commission wants to know that when somebody, when your opponent breaks the cap, that it's not a minor thing, but it has significant impact. So, that's just explaining the significant impact. So, again, it happened multiple times during the primary.
Sean?
We compete really hard at fundraising, and part of the reason why we have to do it while we're talking about real estate speculation is because some pretty big financial institutions have decided that they don't want to see me get to City Hall, at least not as a council member. And so, yeah, the day after the primary, when a lot of campaigns were out celebrating or doing whatever the case might be based on the results, we were out thinking about how we were going to raise a lot of money, because we knew the Chamber of Commerce was going to come into this race with, for the most part, more money than God. And we wanted to make sure that we were in a place where we were competitive and we And we wanted to make sure that we were in a place where we were competitive and we could push back.
And there'll be a hearing on Tuesday for anybody else who wants to hear more about that issue, but let's move on to more about leadership. And this is a pretty straightforward question. We'll start with you, Sean. What committees would you like to chair if elected and why?
I would say that the Planning Land Use and Zoning Committee would be first and foremost, and I mentioned that pretty early in the campaign cycle to the Seattle Times and repeating it here because I think that a couple of the main levers of power that the city council has has to do with funding and it has to do with land use. I think in recent years, we have seen what happens when the city of Seattle abdicates both of those responsibilities and levers of power. We look very hypocritical as a liberal city when we decry what we see with the sale of public lands by the Trump administration in our national parks, but say nothing or say less about the sale of public land here in the Seattle. And I'm thinking about the Mercer Mega Block, which comes to mind immediately, is a big sell-off of public land. In the middle of an affordability crisis, in the middle of a climate crisis, we have to be using every resource that we have at our disposal, and I think making sure that we are using our land more efficiently and according to the best uses of what people in the city of Seattle need here is pretty high on my list of priorities.
Time. Sean?
So committees at the city council, having worked at the city council when my boss was the chair of the Budget Committee, the Budget Committee is probably the most important committee because it impacts the whole $6.5 billion that the city invests. And the budget is a declaration of values, and it's where you can also find efficiencies and redeploy those dollars where they're needed. So if I had a second choice, it would be the Homelessness Committee because my expertise is in affordable housing. Homelessness is the number-one issue I hear when I knock on doors throughout the district and we see it on the streets. We need, city council members need to spend more time reducing homelessness, and so I would want to be a part of that.
So we're running short on time, so I'm going to ask you just to limit your response to this to 30 seconds if possible. You've spent a lot of time with each other on the campaign trail at forums like this one. Is there one thing you admire about your opponent? Alex, we'll start with you.
Sure. I think that, you know, it seems like we're going to do about 20 debates between now and November 5, and so what I admire is that, you know, when we're in certain neighborhoods, the neighborhood community councils having a debate, you know, there are very micro neighborhood issues that are coming up. And I've gone to all those community council meetings over the last few years, you know, either as a legislative aide or just by community involvement, whereas he might not have. And so, but his answers are very consistent, and that's sometimes a tough crowd.
Sean?
I appreciate that my opponent has been able to learn on the fly. I have, as a young person, I have to have been very, very familiar with the climate crisis and what that entails for me and other members of my generation. My understanding is that Alex came into knowledge of or real appreciation for the gravity of the climate crisis at some point in time in the primary.
That's not true. That is not true.
Well, it was something that you had said at a debate at a candidate forum.
That is not true. We all know climate's existential crisis of our time. It's absurd to state that.
I think we'll give you 20 more seconds to sum up, even though we only said 30 because you got interrupted.
We can find the clip where it was stated. This was a candidate forum that was held in the aftermath of the primary by some of the primary contestants, who were gracious enough to host a really, really great forum. And the question was straightforwardly asked, what's something that you had started to think a little bit more about that maybe you didn't at the beginning of the campaign trail, and the climate crisis came up? I wanted to compliment you on that, but if you don't want to accept it, it's fine.
It's not true, so.
All right. So we're going to keep these answers to 30 seconds. No Seattle passive-aggressive allowed. Alex, what is one thing you agree with Councilmember Shama Sawant on? Your time is ticking.
Yeah. What do I agree with Councilmember Shama Sawant on? I think that she's tried to make efforts on impacting the increasing rent on folks, and I, you know, I like her work with Councilmember Lisa Herbert on this issue when she collaborates.
Time. I'm sorry. Sean, what's one thing you agree with Mayor Durkin on? Also 30 seconds.
I would say that Mayor Durkin has shown leadership this year as the conversation around racist policing has started to become more visible around reinstituting and replenishing our community service officer program. My understanding is that that is something that our police chief, Carmen Best, has called for as well as an alternative to militarized forms of policing. So that's the first thing that leaps to mind.
Thank you.
All right. One final question before we get to closing statements. So the last candidate the District 4 voter sent to the council did not complete his term in office. How long do you plan to remain on the council? And what evidence do you have that you possess the medal to stick with it? Sean?
If you elect me, you're going to get four years. You know, the evidence that I have that I have the medal to stick around for four years is that I am a black man in the United States who has lived 34 years, who has organized for power for vulnerable and targeted communities in the face of some pretty staunch opposition. And that's not going to change as a result of getting elected. It's something that I think is a lifelong project, and hopefully is going to be a four-year project as well if we're fortunate enough to get enough votes on November 5.
Thank you. Alex?
So ideally, at least four years. I think, you know, a council member needs to prove through their actions and get results so that they actually earn a reelection. That's really important to be working and listening to your constituents and having. The reason I have the medal is because I was in the city council. I worked for one of the best city council members, and I think that we need to have people who have that government experience and that private sector experience as well. It's about experience.
All right. So we've come to the final scene of the debate. We had a coin flip backstage, and so as a result of that, Sean is going to give the first closing statement. Sean, you have 90 seconds.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming out and joining us today. To the moderators, the timekeepers, you've done a great job. And Alex, it's good to be with you again. I think it's definitely the case that there's a really, really clear choice in this race. It's the decision between whether or not we're going to go in the direction of compassionate solutions to some of the big problems that are facing us as a city, or whether we're going to go in the direction of crueler solutions, which are also ineffectual solutions. I think a compassionate city is one where the tax burden is widely shared by some of the largest corporations in the city, and our tax burden doesn't fall exclusively on working families, on vulnerable and everyday Seattleites. I think a compassionate city is one where houseless folks are able to get connected to the services that we need because we are funding those services at an adequate level. I think it's one where students in the university district don't have to choose between textbooks and food, and one where older Seattleites who are perhaps seniors on fixed incomes don't have to live under the fear of being displaced in our city. We're happy to be endorsed in this race by Kerry Moon, by Justin Farrell, by the King County Democrats, by the 43rd LD Democrats, because I think this is a widely shared vision for compassionate solutions in the city. And it's definitely the case that there are some forces in this election between the Chamber of Commerce and Tim Burgess people for Seattle, all some of these other PACs that I think engaged in some really nasty campaigning in the primary that want to take us in the direction of a cruel city. We can't let that happen as an electorate. I think that pushing back on Trump's agenda and what he represents starts locally. It starts with the decisions that we make here to turn our backs on criminalization of houseless folks and the stigmatization of them. And so I hope that we embrace compassionate solutions as on the road to November and beyond.
And that's time. Alex, 90 seconds.
Sure. I'm running for city council to make our city government more accountable, and that's accountable to our communities, there are 20 neighborhoods in District 4, and accountable for results. I've listened to residents on every block in District 4. They want a city council that's sensible, that gets back to the basics, that reduces homelessness. To reduce homelessness, we need to fund only the data-driven programs proven to work. Compassion requires results. To increase public safety, we need to support the good work of our first responders and hold the criminal justice system accountable. After a master's degree in government, I served the Clinton administration to reduce homelessness. In the private sector, I managed teams of financial analysts to preserve affordable housing. As a city council analyst, I evaluated complex budgets and I advanced programs, progressive programs proven to work. Real experience getting results. That's why I'm endorsed by a broad coalition of labor unions, environmentalists, local businesses. I'm endorsed by the firefighters, by state reps Frank Chopp, Jerry Paulette, Javier Valdez, state senators Jamie Peterson and David Frock, pork commissioner Peter Steinberg, Eden Mack, the school board director, Ron Sims, Nick Locata, the 46 District Democrats, neighborhood businesses down the street from here. And I hope to all the people from District 4 viewing, I hope I earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. And that's it. So thank you for watching Seattle City Club's District 4 Seattle City Council Debate. And again, we'd like to acknowledge the debate's presenting sponsor, Amazon, supporting sponsor, AARP, and host sponsor, University Lutheran, for making this debate possible. Now you may applaud. Thank you so much for holding it in.